We'll call back to order the County Board of County Commissioners meeting of October 12th, 2021. A reminder everyone, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Okay? Now we will proceed with the public hearing, starting with ordinances, P-50.
Mr. Chairman, we have proof of publication of this matter in the Tampa Bay Times on August the 25th of this year.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, DeWes Hernandez, Planning and Development, item P-50 is PDD 220003. This is the adoption, so today we're asking that you accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote. I will read the title into record. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 500 zoning, Section 503 AC agricultural district, Section 504 AC 1 agricultural district, Section 505 AR agricultural residential district, Section 506 AR 1 agricultural residential district, Section 507 AR 5 agricultural residential district, Section 508 AR 5 agricultural residential mobile home district, Section 527 C 3 commercial light manufacturing district, Section 528 I 1 light industrial park district, Section 529 I 2 general industrial park district, Section 905.2 landscaping and buffering, Appendix A definitions and other sections as necessary for internal consistency, providing for applicability, repealer, providing for separability, inclusion into land development code and an effective date. This item went to the horizontal roundtable on August 18th of 21 to the local planning agency on 9/9, who found it consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners, and this was presented to you as a full presentation at first reading on September 28, 2021.
Okay. Is anyone signed up to speak to this item?
Not this item, sir.
How about on WebEx?
Neither.
CNN move for Paul.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
I have a question.
Question?
Is this the one-time hearing of this, or are there two?
This is the last hearing on this item. This is based on a preemption that was sent down.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
That's all.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
So, just to make sure. Oh, I just want to make sure that, is anyone here in the audience that did not sign up to speak, are you in the audience and would like to speak at this time? Seeing no one?
It's roll call vote.
Roll call vote. I have a motion and a second.
You do have a motion and a second.
Yep.
District 2 Commissioner Omar. District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioners Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. P-51.
We have proof of publication of the hearing of this matter in the August 15th edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Justin Gare, Public Infrastructure, fiscal and business administration director. P-51 is an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Chapter 1300, capital facilities, fees and incentives related to fees, Section 1302.8, water and wastewater service impact fees, amending the name of fees and providing for changing fee amounts by resolution, Appendix A definitions, providing for applicability, repealer, separability and inclusion into land development code and an effective date. This is an adoption vote. Full presentation was given on 9/28 on the first reading. As a roll call vote.
Okay. Is anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No, sir. Neither WebEx nor in person at this time.
Is anyone in the room wish to speak to this item? That has not signed up. Move for a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Omar. District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. And now it's time, Ms. Steinsteiner, you want to go over procedure for rezoning?
Be happy to, Mr. Chairman. There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be given, be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation, the opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition to be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been scorned for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's land development code.
Mr. Chairman, DeWes Hernandez, we're going to move to item P-57 first. This item does not-
Do you want to swear a man first?
Absolutely.
We need to do that.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the, oh, I'm sorry, all those who are wishing to speak to these matters, if you would please rise at this time? Anyone who is wishing to speak to these matters on the rezoning agenda, if you would please rise and raise your right hand?
Okay.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in these matters is true, so help you God?
Okay. All right, we're going to go out of order, so you're going to start with P-57?
P-57. You will not have proof of publication on this item, as it was not properly published in a newspaper, General Circulation, PDD 227507, 7 Oaks MPD Master Plan Unit Development, parcel S-19. This is going to be withdrawn from further consideration.
Okay. I think Mr. Two would like to say something to this matter.
Yes, if I could, Joel, to an associate, Palm Harbor, Florida, for the applicant. I'm not sure why it's being characterized as withdrawal from any further consideration, because that's actually not correct. It's being remanded back to planning commission to have a planning commission hearing after proper advertising and then back to the Board. So, I don't think the record should reflect withdrawal, it should reflect a remand and At the planning commission, the clerk advised that there was proof of publication, so nobody knew until Friday that the county had not placed the act. So, I don't think it's a withdrawal from further consideration. My client certainly intends to proceed with the application, and I was, I've conferred with Mr. Petos, and he and I had agreed on December 9th for the planning commission, because that'll be in Date City, and then your first meeting in January, because that would be the Date City meeting, whenever you confirm your schedule. So, I'd like the record to reflect that it's being sent back to planning commission after proper advertising, and that those will be our dates, because my client has to get a contract extension because of this mistake, and he needs to know his dates to tell his sellers. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Two goes back to his seat, because of that little change, I just want to make sure, are you going to, are you going to send out mailed notice again for your, for planning commission and for Board?
Yeah, Mr. Steinsteiner, thank you. Yes, Terry and I have agreed that we will do the full renoticing. We'll send the adjacent property owner letters, we'll post again, and by agreement with Terry, the applicant is actually going to place the advertisement and provide that proof of publication to staff to make certain that it gets advertised this time, and then the county is going to reimburse us from the MPD fee for that additional cost of advertising, since the first failure was not the applicant's mistake.
So, so just for clarification, then, then I agree with Mr. Two, that this would not be considered a withdrawal of his application, he's not going to be reapplying. This, the motion would be to remand the planning commission after appropriate, for the planning commission to hear this item after appropriate advertising, so he's going to start back fresh with, unless there's a, I mean, that's-
I think we need staff to come up and say, can this, we have a request by the applicant, is staff ready to have us make a motion for a date certain, or just a, or continue to a date, a time uncertain, just for the proper motion?
Nectonius Petos Planning and Development. Yes, we would be prepared, we would work to be prepared by the December 9th planning commission date.
Okay, so this would be January 11th, I think would be the VOC's meeting, is that correct? Just so we have the dates right. That, I have January 11th on my calendar, that's the first meeting in Date City.
It would be that or January-
So, the motion here would be to continue this item till-
No, the motion, the motion would be to remand this project to the planning commission after appropriate advertising.
So, not to a date, not to a date certain, then?
The, the date's agreed to, but, but you don't have anything, you don't have anything to preserve to continue, is my, is my point.
Okay. Motion to remand this project per the county attorney's recommendation to planning commission, correct?
Time certain?
He said I can't do a date or time certain.
It's not time certain, they have the dates, but it's not time certain.
Second.
All right, there you go.
So, I've got a motion.
Is that only on this one, or is that, didn't you have a whole bunch grouped together?
No, we got this one.
So, this is only on this one?
We're working on this project.
57.
So, I've got a motion, I need a second.
Second.
No, Jack's second.
And I got a second, and all those in favor-
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, like sign, motion passed 5-0. Okay, we'll move on to, you're going to do P-54 next?
P-52.
Hmm?
P-52.
P-52. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this matter was continued from a previous meeting at which time notice was published for that meeting.
Item P-52 is PDD 227344, it's a zoning amendment, Adrian Philip MPD Master Plan Unit Development, Adrian Philip Overpass LLC, who requests us to continue the item to the October 26, 2021 BCC meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Move to continue date certain.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion passed 5-0.
So, now we're going to move to P-54.
P-54, okay. No, we'll, we'll, P-54, we'll come back.
Mr. Chairman, we, and Commissioners, we do have notice of, notice of hearing at this time through publication in the Tampa Bay Times.
That's on P-54?
On P-54 showing June 20th of 21.
Yes, the item's been continued several times, and now it will be another continuance. PDD 227546, it's Y Smith Properties LLC, it's for a change in zoning from C 2 general commercial district to an I 1 light industrial park district. The applicant has requested a continuance to the November 9th, 21, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Date City. This was advertised as a, as a approval with approval, so if you want to call for public comment.
What, can I ask a question? Are we on, I'm sorry, is this 52?
54.
54.
Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, we do not have anyone previously signed up either virtually or in person to speak to this matter.
Why, I'm just curious why it's being continued, because this is something we would be supporting, right?
Yeah, I, I understand there's a proposed code change, so the applicant has some concerns, and we're discussing those concerns.
Code change?
Land development code change, yes. That will, the Board will adopt before the end of the year.
Okay.
Can we postpone it to January? Or when it's in Newport Ritchie?
When does it continue to?
To November 9th, 21. There is no opposition to the item.
Okay. All right, I need a motion.
I'm going to accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second.
I'm just going to say, I'm not going to be here November 9th. I will be on the Mopet track, and it is in my district, so.
The next meeting after that, I think, is in December.
I'm not sure, it's-
If there's no opposition, then it-
If there's no opposition, there shouldn't be.
Okay. Then that's fine.
There's no opposition. Okay, so I got a motion and a second.
Motion to continue.
To continue.
To November 9th at 1:30, as soon thereafter as may be heard.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
Are we back to consent agenda? It was to 53 and 55.
Yes, sir.
All right, so then as to P-53 and P-55, P-53 was published in the August 25th Tampa Bay Times, P-55 was published in the September 8th, 19, 2021 Tampa Bay Times.
P-53 is PDD 227547, it's a zoning amendment in the name Floyd Filmon Groves LLC, it's for a change in zoning from AC agricultural district to ER 2 estate residential district. This comes through with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the planning commission.
Okay, is anyone here to speak against this item?
We have persons signed up for P-53.
Okay, that's all. Are, is anyone here that signed up to speak against this item? Okay, so, there's no one signed up, and the person here is not speaking against the item, so it stays on consent, so we move on to the next one.
Nancy, are you in opposition to the application?
None, we're for it, but we want to speak.
We don't, you don't want, no, you don't want to speak? You're not in opposi-
Then pull it, pull it off a consent and give them an opportunity to speak.
We'll pull, pull P-53 off consent. Okay, so, we'll take public comment on it right now, or, we got one more consent?
Let's do the P-5-
Let's finish the consent.
Okay. So, P-55 is PW 220010 Cedar Wade Paving Assessment Number 3454, in the amount of $30,575. The request is to approve the assessment.
Okay, is anyone here to speak against this item?
We do not have anyone either virtually or in person signed up at this time.
Okay, so it stays on consent, and then I will take a motion toward the consent item.
Move a pool of consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0 on P-55. We will go back to P-53 and take public comment on P-53.
Nancy Hayswood?
Nancy Hayswood, 34110, a nice place. I apologize, and to Mr. Harvey too, for pulling it off, but to me, it's very important to say that this is something that's being done right in the Northeast rural area, going from ag to estate residential, too, is something that's great for us, and we hope that this continues to be done in this way. It is a bit on the high end, but that's great, it's kind of in a transition area. Thank you all so much for your courtesy.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And Ms. Costa, Alma Costa?
Name and address, or just? Name and address, excuse me. My name is Alma Costa, I live at 16995 Spring Valley Road, and I have property that's adjacent to this as well, and I definitely approve this subdivision, two and a half acres are wonderful. In northeast Pasco, we, I've been working on this since Sylvia Young was the county commissioner. That's a long time to turn, to go to all these meetings, you know, and I am trying to protect this area, and I think this whole northeast Pasco should be two and a half acres or greater, because this is a rural area, and that's what we want. We want it to stay rural, and most of the new coming people are from Tampa, because they want to get away from the congestion, the boxhones, and they want the freedom to have more land with their homes, and they want to have horses or cattle or whatever. Even two and a half acres, I've seen them have cattle on it. So, I definitely think that this is a good plan, and all northeast Pasco should be two and a half acres or greater. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I did, in, in looking at the restrictions, I did see there is a preservation right-of-way being put in here for Blanton, is that correct? I just want to remind everyone of the time and expense we went to, to have, I think it was, come, do a plan for the, that area for bike trails, for bike routes, and that Blanton is probably, probably the number one road that we use for cycle tourism out there, and make sure that we're reserving enough width to be able to put one day those safety shoulders on some of those routes out there, so that cars and trucks can pass each other safely along with the cyclists, because we've had a lot of accidents and deaths in that area, so. I do think it's in here, that they have the width, I just want to make sure that number is the right number?
Yeah, it's in there.
That would have to be on 41.
It's a preserving right-of-way.
That would have to be on 41 on this property, right?
County Road 41.
Yeah, County Road 41. Which is an arterial road.
But they go up Blanton to, I don't know the route.
That is, that is County Road 41.
Oh, it is, okay, because we've identified the A, B, and C routes up there.
Yeah, yeah, this, this property sits on Flat Road and, and County Road 41.
Mr. Chairman, if there's nobody else here to speak, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed. We're now on 56. 56.
This particular petition has been advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on September 1st and September 8th of this year for hearing at this time.
Good afternoon, Joanne Ravita, Real Property and Planning. Real Property and Planning team has received a petition to vacate a portion of a platted right-of-way filed by Bedrock Winters LLC. Next slide. Petitioner has requested the vacation to correct an encroachment. There were no objections to this petition, team recommends approval.
Mr. Chairman, the only one signed up at this time is representing, I believe, the owners of the property, the applicant. There's no, no one else has signed up.
Okay, is anyone in the room speak to this item? The applicant, is the applicant allowed to speak?
Mr. Waller, do you want to speak?
You don't want to speak.
You don't? Okay. All right. Where's the board?
Move for Paul.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
And I believe that-
Wow, speedy day.
That's the end of that, but we'll go back to old business, so. Mr. Mariano, I have an item you want to bring up.
Yes, sir, just to touch to, I want to thank Mike Carbeller's team, Tower Drive. Been waiting for inlets and pipes, it's being constructed as we speak, and that's going to take a major bit of stress right across US 19 and that little curve going into Signal Cove. And this weekend is the Beach Charity Festival and Auction at Sun West Park. This benefits our seniors, benefits cares, there's going to be live bands, fireworks, foods, crafts, and draft. It starts Saturday at 10:00 a.m., October 16th to dusk, and then Sunday, October 17th, from 10:00 to 5:00. All the money's going to go to the carers.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. The only thing I have, I want to remind everybody that on October 15th through, October 17th, the southbound lanes on I-75 will be closed from the 15th through the 16th, going, going to the, to the south, and then on the, October 16th and October 17th, the lanes going north will be closed. So, suggest you don't try to travel interstate right in between 52 and 54.
To clarify, though, that's from 9:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m.
Yeah, 9:00 p.m. to, to, 9, what is it?
9:00 a.m., yeah.
So, but those will be closed, so they're actually moving forward with the overpass intersection and placing some of those beams and all across interstate during that time, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing.
Okay.
We'll have two things. One is, I was asking my husband where the name came for Tower Road, and now that you say there's a Tower Drive, yeah, he said that, that is an old name, because there were some towers on it that are, I don't think, no longer there. So, I kind of want to start, stop referring to Tower Road as Tower Road, and let's call it the Rage Land, which is the road that it is now, that goes through Starkey. Quit calling it Tower, and especially if there's a Tower Road, so I want to bring that up for our discussion. And also, I had lunch with the chair of the school board today, and they would like to have the census data. I had no idea, we never sent them the census data, and apparently, yeah, so, they called and tried to get it from the state, the state says they send it to the county, and, and so the county has to send it to the school district, so they have not seen what it looks like. Also, with, in regards to the school board member, number four, they're going to take, once they get the numbers, they're going to take a look and see if they want to make a recommendation that we modify our map to drop down in Aristida to Panic, takes out, you know, on that side of the street, 50 houses or something, but it makes the maps the same. And I, you know, I'm, I think it's not optimum to have the two commissioners in one neighborhood, because that would be Commissioner District Ford with some of the houses, but if, if there's some compelling reason that, that it's easier in, in any process to have same maps, that's a very easy little fix.
It takes the heart, throw it away, let it go.
Yeah, so, so anyway, once they get the data, they're going to look at it and, and give us recommendation before our next meeting, yeah.
Mr. Miles?
So, to be clear, we downloaded that data from the US Census Bureau's public data site.
Oh, they thought that you got it from the state.
Which was available to the public the same day we downloaded it, so.
They may not know that. Because they're trying to see it.
We're going to share our shape files, the GIS, the GIS integration, we'll give them that.
Okay.
With our lines, as you all had earlier, and, so.
Okay. All right, but anyway, I think that would, either way, what, whatever it was.
Anything else?
I had some, but I can't remember what it was, so.
Oh, yeah. Sound that quick. Sound that quick, so, okay, thank you for all the staff, all that you do, we appreciate it, we know you're busy, keep up the good work, and we'll see you next week. Adorn.
Bye, ladies.
We're out.